All right, we will get started at 7:01. Can we get a call to order, please?
You just did that.
Roll call, I'm sorry. Mr. Martin? Dr. Lyons?
Here.
Dr. Edsall?
Here.
Ms. Ferris-Hyland?
Here.
Dr. Chambers?
Present.
Dr. Torres?
Here.
Ms. Taikaki?
Here.
And Ms. Laco?
Here.
Thank you. Trustee Taikaki, can you read our mission statement, please?
Yes, our mission statement is nurturing each child, educating all students, and building world citizens.
Thank you. Can I get approval of agenda?
I move to approve the agenda for the August 11th, 2025 regular meeting as presented.
All right, that was moved by trustee Edsall, second by trustee Torres. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion approved. Get approval of minutes? Can I get a motion for approval of minutes?
I move that the Board of Education approve the following minutes as presented. The July 4th, 2025 regular meeting and the July, I'm sorry, July 14th, 2025 regular meeting and July 14th, 2025 closed session.
Second.
All right, that was moved by trustee Taikaki and seconded by trustee Chambers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion approved. Recognition, trustee Ferris-Hyland, do we have any recognition?
None tonight, hopefully the next one.
All right, any recognition from anyone else? All right, perfect. We'll move on to superintendent's report, turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'm going to start with the first day of school coming up, Monday, August 25th, half day for all students this year, including middle school and high school, which is a change from past years. A little bit about the 25-26 school year calendar. While the district and the East Lansing Education Association continue to bargain in good faith to establish a new contract, the two parties have worked together to sign a letter of agreement for the first semester for the 25-26 school year calendar. The first day of school, as I mentioned, is the 25th, which is a half day, and will follow the tentative calendar that's been previously released. We'll send out a copy of it tomorrow with the superintendent report as well for everybody. But we do have a letter of agreement signed for the first semester of that calendar while we continue to bargain that contract. Just a reminder, we'll be here in this location for board meetings until probably on November sometime. We'll keep everybody updated when we move to the new building for these meetings. A little bit about McDonald Middle School athletics. Beginning this fall, East Lansing Public Schools and McDonald Middle School will be operating the middle school athletic program that's been run by the City of East Lansing for many years. Mr. Melvin White, our middle school dean of students, has been hired as the middle school athletics coordinator. And the fall offerings for middle school include cross-country and volleyball. Participation information will be coming from McDonald Middle School and/or final forms, so watch your email for details. Also about athletic participation fees, and a letter, a more detailed letter went out about this Friday. Since COVID-19, the East Lansing Board of Education has taken action to pause participation fees for high school student athletes in an effort to reengage students and promote wellness post-pandemic. Due to an influx of one-time federal funds to support students during COVID times, the district was able to cover student participation fees. Those funds have all been spent as required by law. We've established the following athletic participation fees for our student athletes for 2025-26. East Lansing High School, $75 per sport. McDonald Middle School, $50 per sport, their seasons and length of seasons are shorter. However, we understand that every family's financial situation is unique. If you are in a position to contribute the full fee, we appreciate your support in helping us sustain high-quality athletic programming. If you're unable to contribute the full amount at this time, please know that we are committed to making athletics accessible to all students. No one will be excluded from participation due to financial constraints, and no explanation is necessary. So we have four options for families. You're welcome to, number one, pay the full $75 or $50 fee for your student athlete. Two, contribute a smaller amount that feels manageable for your family. Three, pay none of the participation fee at this time. Or four, make an additional donation to help cover the cost for another student. Our goal is to meet families where they are while continuing to provide high-quality athletic experiences for all of our student athletes. As the district's financial status may change from year to year, this approach is a one-year pilot program that we'll evaluate at the end of 25-26. More information and payment contribution options will be coming from your students' building and/or final forms in the next week. A little bit on the status of free breakfasts and lunches. To this date, the Michigan Legislature has not passed a state budget for fiscal year 25-26. This includes no budget for K-12 schools. Current funding for the Michigan School Meals Program will expire September 30th, 2025, and ELPS will continue to provide free breakfast and lunch to all students through this date. If the legislature renews funding for the school meals program for 25-26, free school meals will continue beyond September. If not, we will notify families of any changes with as much notice as we are provided. So more information on that to come, but we'll start the year with free breakfast and lunch at least through September 30th. And then a few important dates. Thursday, August 21st is our first day of professional learning for staff and elementary back-to-school night from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. Monday, August 25th is the first day for students, half-day. Friday, the 29th, and Monday, September 1st, there is no school due to the Labor Day holiday weekend. And Friday, September 26th, is our first staff professional learning Friday, which means no school for students. Lots of information in this week's updates, but happy to take any board questions.
Thank you, Superintendent. Laco, any questions from the board?
In regards to free breakfast and lunch, after September 30th, free and reduced lunch, will they be available for those in the past who completed the forms for free and qualified through that federal program?
Yes, yes, absolutely. So, once we know better the status of that, we'll get information out to everybody, but yes, that is absolutely true. And any schools that qualified under the community eligibility provision would still be eligible for free lunches and breakfasts as well.
For the entire school?
Yes.
Okay. And we had two schools?
I'll have to look it up, it's been a few years since we've done it, so I don't want to speak out, which I don't want to be inaccurate if that, if the community eligibility qualification for our buildings have changed. So let me check into that to see who that would, which ones would qualify current year, if that's the case.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks for asking.
Any other questions? All right, thank you Superintendent Laco. We'll move to our consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda to include the following items. New hires, hiring of Shuan Ru Ni Holly Brown, 1.0 FTE English Language Learner Teacher at Red Cedar Elementary at MA Step 5, effective August 21st, 2025. Hiring of Jennifer Harvey, .50 FTE English Language Learner Teacher at Glen Karen Elementary at MA Step 3, effective August 21st, 2025. Hiring of Jasmine Salmon as a conditional hire pending attainment of certification, 1.0 FTE School Social Worker at East Lansing High School at MA Step 11, effective August 21st, 2025. The individual will be paid a daily rate of $250 until certification is received. Hiring of Rachel Sherman as a conditional hire pending attainment of certification, 1.0 FTE Resource Room Teacher at McDonald Middle School, excuse me, at BA Step 3, effective August 21st, 2025. The individual will be paid a daily rate of $250 until certification is received.
All right, there's no discussion on this, so we can go into the...
I will second it.
Yeah, sorry. I thought I heard a second.
Was there one? Did you say it? Did I miss it?
No.
Second.
Yes. All right, moved by trustee Edsall and seconded by trustee Taikaki. And there's no discussion on this, so move to a vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right, motion passes unanimously. So congratulations, I know we have Holly here, and do we have, oh, and... Jennifer Harvey, well, congratulations. I would say, come on up to the microphone if you would like to, but I know, you know, you don't have to, though, but we just would like to say, congratulations. It's a little intimidating walking up here and having to speak on the stage. All right. We will now move into public comment. As Mrs. Horcourt is grabbing those comment sheets, I will read this. Public comment is the opportunity to address the board. Speakers are to confine the remarks to five minutes. If a speaker requires more than five minutes after all other persons who have requested to speak during this part of the meeting have spoken, that speaker will be allowed additional time. The superintendent or other district staff may comment to clear up or avoid significant misunderstandings. All right. All right, our first public comment is Tim Akers, compensation ELEA contract.
Good evening. First, I wanted to say, after looking over the TA that was brought to us, obviously, a lot of hard work went into it, and there's some very nice elements, some nice benefits for the teachers. But there's one sticking point that I think may have swayed the vote to make it a negative, and I want to make sure that I bring that to your attention so it can be addressed before the next round of voting. It has taken me 18 years to move 13 steps on the pay scale. And those five steps that I've lost, bits and pieces here, pay freezes, et cetera, et cetera, have cost me over $100,000 in lifetime earnings, which is substantial. Last year, I finally got to the top of the pay scale. And to see that all I stand to get next year was a percent and a half, which comes out to just around $1,400, which after taxes comes out to about $27 a week. To do that to your senior teachers, that's why the vote went the way it went to a large degree. To see that everyone, administrators included, at least got 3% in order to cover inflation, a point and a half doesn't cover inflation, nor will it cover increases in healthcare premiums. Now, I realize it doesn't have to be on the salary schedule, but I've negotiated about 10 contracts in this district, and we've received similar compensation packages to this one when we had less than half of our current fund balance. So with the current fund balance in place, I don't see why we can't come up with a little something for the teachers that are on the higher end of the scale, even if it's 3% just to cover inflation. Our last contract, we did get increases, but inflation at the time was 8 or 9%. So we keep falling behind in earning power. And especially for those of us who have been here long enough to have been through pay freezes and partial steps and no percentages, it adds up after a while. So with, I think it was maybe a 12-vote difference, I think you might be able to convince some senior teachers to vote in favor if they have compensation that's a bit more fair, quite frankly. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Akers. Next, we have Kristin Vettner on AFSMI.
Hello, my name is Kristin Vettner, and I'm representing AFSMI today. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Laco, and administrators. On behalf of AFSMI, I'd like to thank the administration for the cooperation and respectful way we worked together during our recent contract negotiations. We even found a couple times to laugh together, which was very appreciated. The end result is a fair contract that our members are happy with, and I believe it reflects the district's commitment to valuing the important work we do every day. I would also like to take a moment to stand in solidarity with our colleagues in the teachers' union. While our negotiations reached a positive conclusion, we recognize that theirs is still ongoing, and their membership recently voted down the proposed contract. We know how difficult this process can be, and we stand behind them as they continue working toward an agreement that they feel meets their needs. We are all here for the same reason, to serve students and strengthen our schools. When one group of educators or staff succeeds, it benefits us all. And there, just as a side note, I want to say I'm very upset that trustee Martin isn't here today, because I always like to dazzle him with knowing exactly how many students are at the high school. So I just want to go on record as saying it's 1,288. Thank you so much, have a great day.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Ross Gorman.
Hello, everyone, my name is Ross Gorman. I am the president of the ELEA, the East Lansing Teachers Association. I usually have much more thoroughly prepared remarks, so bear with me a bit today, but I am following Kristin and representing the ELEA after our recent tentative agreement failed. And so I feel that I have a few obligations. First off, I do want to thank administration and my negotiation team for showing up at these meetings over the last, I mean, it took six months just about. So that was a lot of hours, and we've got more work yet to do, but I am optimistic about the direction of that work. Now, I need to share some of the feelings of my membership. Some of those members are here and have spoken and will continue to speak, but largely, we have received feedback that the tentative agreement was voted down due to salary concerns. There are other concerns that were brought up, but we are making good progress already bargaining a new tentative agreement. So I don't want to get into all of the weeds of those details. But I do want to talk a little bit on the piece that is constantly brought up about administrative raises, about teacher compensation, because there is some nuance that can be brought to light, and I want to make sure that people understand these things. Then I want to talk a little bit about my concerns that I've brought to the board in the past. So there's been a lot of talk about administrative raises. My understanding is that these have been about 3% per year for our administrators across the board. Our teachers were offered about a 1% raise on the pay scale. So what that means is that year over year, a first-year teacher or a last-year teacher at the end of the pay scale will receive 1% more. However, teachers who are on that pay scale, who are advancing up the pay scale, getting a year of seniority, will receive a step, which is about 4% to 5% compensation. My concern in the long run is that this leaves teachers falling behind as a profession, right? If you increase salary of administrators, 3%, teachers, 1%. The concerns I'm hearing is that that leads to a differential over time, right, in the professions. Now, our district's fund balance is robust, but we have a significant deficit, right? And my understanding of this deficit is that if we add too much to it, it could lead to concerns over FTE, right? And what does it mean for our teachers or our district if we find ourselves in a significant budgetary hole? But allow me to do a little bit of an I told you so, because I was here a year ago tomorrow, and I talked about administrative raises and bonuses. And I said that this would have to be paid for somewhere, right? We did not have per-people funding increases those last two years. While our budget is up in the air in Lansing, it looks like we will receive per-people funding increases. So, please consider these budgetary concerns carefully. Please consider the concerns of my membership carefully. But do know that our negotiation team is working in good faith, and that we've made significant progress, and we are enthusiastic about what we will hopefully be able to present to membership soon. Part of that, as Superintendent Laco has said, is a district calendar that has been rolled out so that families can be secure, knowing that their teachers and school staff are going to be ready to educate kids on the first day of school. So thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I encourage you to reach out, and I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. My last form I have up here is Adam Orange, speaking on ELEA support. If you have, if anyone else would like to give public comment, there are blue forms back there, and you can bring them up.
Still feel like a spring chicken, I'm surprised I did that. I did write that I'm originally here to talk on behalf of the ELEA, but it would behoove me to also first thank the board again for approving the biannual German exchange trip. Here Filter and I came back a couple of weeks ago. We had a wonderful group of students and host families and are grateful for the support and the interest in intercultural and linguistic adventures and the robust offerings that we have in our World Language Department. And we are excited to have our reciprocal visit here in middle to late September when our friends and colleagues from Gymnasium Siebold from Wurzburg come. So thank you for your continued support of that. I'm not going to talk about details about continued negotiations because I don't think that's being done in good faith. So I'd like to just piggyback a little bit on what Ross said as a leader for our group. I have the pleasure, along with others here tonight, to be in on those meetings and to negotiate on behalf of our membership and to bring them the results as best as we can that they wish, that they desire, working hand-in-hand as best we can with the administration. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't just Ross from our team, that others are recognizing the hard work that's being done. And I do want to thank the teachers that came today in the throes of our final days of summer to show the support and to be here. It certainly doesn't go unnoticed, and I would just continue to say that we are working hard on behalf of those who have answered our questionnaire in light of this failure and are certainly hopeful moving forward in the coming days that we come to a compromise. And again, want to thank you all for listening.
Thank you very much. I don't think we have any more. All right, thank you, everyone who came out for public comment. We'll move on to our board discussion. I don't have any items that were submitted, but do we have anyone that has any discussion that they would like to have right now? We will move to action items. If I can get a motion on action item A, June 2025 Trune Policy Updates?
Looks like me. I move that the board approve the June 2025 Trune Policy Updates as recommended, excluding Policies 3201A, 4105B, 5405, 5420, and 5421. Second. So I'll just follow that up to say that those five excluded policies will be discussed at our next policy meeting and probably come to items of information shortly after that. They just needed a little more information before we could move those forward. But the others were fully discussed at the policy committee, and you saw if there were any edits made to them in items of information and then in today's agenda packet.
All right, that was moved by trustee Edsall, seconded by Chambers. Any other discussion or questions on this item? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. We will move on to motion, or action item B, award bids for safety, security, and accessibility bond bid, package number two, high school addition. And a motion?
I move that the Board of Education award the following bid related to the high school addition as follows. Category 6 metal panels, Eagle Enterprise, $82,215.
Second.
That was moved by trustee Ferris-Hyland, seconded by trustee Edsall. Any discussion or questions on this?
This is not the same metal panel company we've had problems with. Just wanted to confirm that for the community.
All right, any other questions, discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Move on to action item C, bid package number two, high school addition, request for construction, general conditions. Can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve a budgetary change order in the amount of $225,070 to Clark Construction Company to fund construction, general conditions, costs associated with onsite operations for the high school addition project.
Second.
That was moved by trustee Chambers, seconded by trustee Taikaki. Any discussion or questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And move to action items D, hot water storage tanks. Can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education award the bid for the replacement of the high school hot water storage tanks to Hopkins Mechanical Services in the amount of $113,900.
Second.
Moved by trustee Taikaki, seconded by trustee Edsall. Any discussion or questions?
I was just recently given a tour of our hot water tanks this week on Monday by Mr. Hastings, and I'm excited to approve this.
Okay. Go hot water tanks.
I'm sure there was many, much more to see other than the hot water tanks, but remember that.
Let's just say, after seeing the new elementary school systems, the high school system was like scary. But not dangerous. Just older.
All right, well, let's move to a vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And action item E, updates to at-will contracts. Can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the contract updates for the following salaried employees. Dorcas Breder Schumake, Dean for Student Success; Melvin White, Dean for Student Success; Heather Finley, District Mental Health Coordinator; Paul Shanks, Behavior Systems Analyst; Carol Wall, Payroll Manager; Kaylee Stevens, Instruction Design Specialist; Tavo Arceo, Supervisor of Grounds; Scott Baker Young, Supervisor of Accounting; and Vince Watson, Supervisor of Custodians.
Second.
All right. Moved by trustee Edsall, seconded by trustee Ferris-Hyland. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Last one, FSP contract. Can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the changes to the agreement between the East Lansing Board of Education and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI, as presented.
Second. All right, moved by trustee Ferris-Hyland, seconded by trustee Torres. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, at this time, we're going to move into our closed session. I need to get a motion.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session pursuant to Section 8(c) of the Open Meetings Act related to collective bargaining.
Second.
Moved by trustee Chambers, seconded by trustee Edsall. We need to get a roll call vote. Trustee Lyons? Yes. Trustee Edsall?
Yes.
Trustee Ferris-Hyland? Yes. Trustee Chambers?
Yes.
Trustee Torres? Yes. And trustee Ms. Taikaki? Yes. All right, we're back in session. All right, so we'll move on to our committee reports. Academic and Tech Committee, that's me, we had no meetings, and I'll plan on an email from me soon so we can set up our first meeting in September. Facilities?
Same for facilities, we'll meet early fall, once we get back in, but nothing's set yet.
Finance?
We will meet, when do we meet? 1:00 on September 8th. Where are meetings now?
We have a space down there, that we have a conference room. Yeah, still at the high school, yeah, still in our office area.
Okay.
Yeah, same general area, but...
Come eat at my house. I like that plan.
It's open, it's open to everybody. As long as it's open to everybody.
It's open to everybody.
Come on in, I got cookies.
We'll post it out front.
May make weed also, you know, do a little labor.
Pick those snap peas.
Eat a cookie, yeah.
Anything else from finance?
No.
All right, intergovernmental?
What she said.
No meetings.
Yeah, but we will, I will be sending an email.
All right, personnel?
That's Chris.
Yeah, we're working on scheduling right now. I've got an email out to the committee about some days and times.
Did you send it out already?
Yeah.
I am not getting emails, so if you can send to my Yahoo account. I've talked to Christian, they can't figure it out on their end.
Okay.
Yep, I'll resend. I'll just send it to your other email.
Because he's out of town until Sunday, but...
A week from today.
Yeah. I can forward it to her Yahoo right now, too, so she has it.
Oh, you got it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Policy?
Policy meet, we have not, we did not meet in August. We will meet September 8th at 10:30.
And ISOA?
We're still paused for the summer. I believe we pick back up in September.
Announcements, we have the next regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Education on August 25th, 2025, here in this auditorium. Any other announcements? All right, with that, we'll adjourn at 8:16.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.